Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Alodion Morris Pradium, Antay Kalorah. The acronym is AMPAC and I'm Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 153, Class 153. What did we learn in Class 152? Well, we started getting a basic understanding, a fundamental understanding, of the difference between public law and private law, right? We looked that up in the Blacks Law Dictionary, 4th Edition. And what we're starting to learn is that public law is more superior than private law. What's an example of public law? Well, that's constitutions. But what type of constitutions? State constitutions, right? What is deemed private law? Well, that can be a constitution. What type of constitution? A constitution of a church or a constitution of a charter, right? A privatized charter, right? So, Moors gotta start understanding the difference between public law, which is the state constitution, public law is the statutes of the state, public law is any of the policies, regulations, and ordinances of the state. Public law is regarding what? The executive branch, legislative branch, and judicial branch of the state, right? Public law is what? Case law, right? Rulings from the court. All of these are public law. What else is public law? International law, as well as international what? Charter of the United Nations is public law. Also, their resolutions from the United Nations is public law, right? But under private law, private law is subordinate to public law. What is private law? Well, a lot of people don't understand that their charters of their religious corporations are deemed private law. And private law is subordinate to public law. Public law is superior. Private law is inferior. It is subordinate, right? But what has happened with the Moors? The Moors have intermixed both public law and private law. What do I mean? The Moors have intermixed this thing called what? Church and state. Church is private law. State is public law. But when you intermix the two, it creates confusion. This is why Moors are saying, "Oh, it's based on what? Truth and falsehood strangely mixed." What's happening? It's because Moors keep intermixing what? State and church. Because they don't understand the difference between what? Church and state. So, let me say this for the record. You must understand that the world has moved on. What do I mean? Under contemporary law, the world has agreed through the Charter of the United Nations of 1945, that the world has agreed that it's all about state rights, which means the state supersedes all religious corporations. So, after 1945, they claim it called what? Civilized nations. So, when you study civilized nation, you go to the Statues of the International Court of Justice. Article 38 tells you what? It's all about civilized nations must adhere to what? International law, right? And the rule of law, the practice of law, the principles of law, right? It's for civilized nation. But what's deemed a civilized nation? People who have pledged allegiance to what? The external state, the mother state. So, that means that all churches have become subordinated to state. So, if state is supreme and churches are subordinate to the states, this is what people can understand. So, you have supreme law of the state and inferior law is the church. This is what all the states on planet Earth agreed to after the year 1945. Why am I making this a point? Okay, listen. The Moore Science Temple was based on and founded upon what? A divine and national movement. That was perfectly fine prior to what? 1945. Prior to 1945, you could still somewhat intermix both church and state, right? Because Noam Droual Lee was talking about what? What was the Moore Science Temple talking about? They was intermixing church and state. Because when you say divine and national movement, divine means what? Religion. That's church. That's a temple. So, the temple was intermixing politics into the church and created a divine and national movement. That means you're trying to intermix what? Both church and state. The world moved on past that in 1945. So, what we have to understand is there's nothing wrong with the Moore Science Temple as long as it stops talking about its affiliation to politics. You cannot mix church and state. It's either state or church. You must separate the two. You must understand under public law, the state will always reign supreme over private law and churches are deemed private law. And you cannot create a Frankenstein. You cannot create a hybrid. The world has moved on after 1945. So, what am I trying to say? The divine and national movement as a mission and vision statement, right? It's a mission statement. It became antiquated after 1945 because no one could intermix church and state. Nobody on planet Earth, no state on planet Earth could intermix church and state. You have to lead with state. It's all about state. And then the state protects what? Your religious rights. But your religious rights are private law. The public law is all about the state. It's state rights. It's state laws. It's state constitution. It's state statutes. It's state policies. It's state regulations. It's state ordinances. It's all about the state. Who can be parties to a treaty? Only a state. A church can't be parties to a treaty. Only states can be parties to a treaty. So, when the Moors kept turning around and saying, "Oh, reinforcing the Treaty of Peace and Friendship." Well, how are you doing that without a state? Then they turn around and say, "Oh, the temple is a state." No, that's called fiction. You know what that's called? Patently frivolous and arbitrary and capricious because the whole world moved on past this whole mixing church and state. No one does it anymore. It's an antiquated mission statement. And this was the Moors never understood. But why is it that the Moors never understood that? It's because the FBI and the CIA have always infiltrated to make sure that Moors never understood that it's all about state rights, that it's not about church rights. It's about state rights and states protect the rights of the churches, but churches come under the umbrella protections of the states. So, what needs to happen next? Well, Africa started to decolonize. The islanders started to decolonize. None of the African states decolonized call themselves a temple. Not one of them. None of the islanders decolonized call themselves a temple. Not one of them. This is the reason why the Moors have been stuck in time because we had the wrong mission statement after 1945. Listen to what I'm saying. Noam Droual Lee's plan was perfect between 1913 and 1929. Great plan. Back then, people were still on the religious thing. But after 1945, the whole world agreed to move past religion. Now, it's about state rights. So, you can't blame this on Noam Droual Lee. He what? He transitioned in 1929. So, all the Moors after 1929 should have understood to keep up with what? The new era of time. And the new era of time says what? After 1945, it's about state rights for civilized nations. And the Moors have not been civilized since 1945. The Moors have been living an antiquated mission statement. That's not a knock on Noam Droual Lee. He's been gone since 1929. We having straight talk. His plan was perfect up until 1929. But after 1945, it was on the Moors who were living during that time, after 1945, to understand it was a new era of time. It was all about state rights. If they didn't understand it in 1945, why didn't they follow the example of the African states? Why didn't they follow the example of the islanders who were all decolonizing? So, you have to understand the FBI and the CIA kept punking the Moors and punking the black community, punking the copper-colored people to stay where? In their churches. This is what happened. So, we started mastering private law instead of mastering public law. What is public law? State. What is private law? Church. And it must be a separation of what? Church and state. And you must understand one is superior and one is what? Inferior. Okay, let's talk contract law. What are the four basic elements of a contract? Four basic elements of a contract is what? Number one is what? Parties must be known, right? What's number two? Who's inferior? Excuse me, who's superior and who's inferior, right? Box number two, who's superior and who's inferior in what? The contract. What's box number three? What are the terms and conditions? And box number four is what? How do you enforce the contract? So, the Moors after 1945 failed to understand the four basic elements of a contract because they were still trying to enforce themselves as what? A religious corporation. Okay, let's talk parties. If you say you're a religious corporation and we're talking the four elements of a contract, the first part is what? First box is what? Parties must be known. So, you say you're a religious corporation. Immediately under international law and state law, you just became what? Subordinate in the contract. So, box number two is like, is what? Who's superior? Who's inferior? Soon you say you're part of a religious corporation, you immediately in a second position. You're inferior. Who was superior in the contract? The state. Let's say it was state of Illinois in the United States. They were superior over anyone who said they had a religious corporation and a charter. Okay, let's look at box number three. What are the terms and conditions? You say you're part of a religious corporation. You're trying to enforce your rights through a religious corporation. What? That's a term, religious corporation. What's the condition? That you're what? Inferior in the contract. That's the terms and conditions because that's private law. Okay, let's look at the fourth box. How do you enforce the contract? The United States and the several union states have been locking up Moors for decades because Moors could not enforce their rights through a religious corporation because they were all quote-unquote "stateless," proclaiming that the temple was a state. And that's what? Patently frivolous and arbitrary and capricious because there is no church and state intermixed anymore after the year 1945. So, the Moors had the wrong plan of execution. And you know what they say about the definition of insanity? It's doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result. The world has moved on past religious corporations. Now, it's all about state rights. That's the bottom line. That's what we have to take away from Class 152. What else did we learn in Class 152? Well, we started going over a case called what? Western Sahara. And the Western Sahara was about what? The Western Sahara people had declared their independence, right? But unfortunately, the Kingdom of Morocco was trying to annex the territory along with the Mauritius, excuse me, the Mauritanian people. So, the International Court of Justice had to get involved because the General Assembly of the United Nations had petitioned two questions to the ICJ to see if in fact the King Morocco had any legal claim, to see in fact if the Mauritanian country had any legal claim on the Western Sahara. So, the case is really about what? Decolonization versus annexation. Because the King Morocco and Mauritanian countries were trying to annex the territory of Western Sahara. But the Sahara people, Sahari people, had already declared their independence. And they were entitled to what? Their self-determination to self-govern. So, in that case, we started learning what? That one of the judges had an opinion. Judge De Castro of Spain in the Western Sahara case of 1975. What did he say about the Moors, right? Because he was talking about the independent Moors. He said, "The independent Moors cannot have a personal allegiance to the Sultan." And neither can the Moors have a personal allegiance to any individual on planet Earth and still proclaim some type of sovereign rights. So, the Moors have to pledge allegiance to who? The state because the state is a person in international law. The state is a person according to your constitution. Whatever the name is on your constitution, that is the name of a person. So, the state had to make a claim to the land, territory, and the state had to make a claim to who? The inhabitants, which was the Moors themselves under personal jurisdiction. So, Judge De Castro in the case of Western Sahara started laying out. And he told everyone straight up, "If these Moors want their rights, they have to pledge allegiance to the state. And once they pledge allegiance to the state, they automatically pledge allegiance to the head of state, which just happens to be a Sultan." And this is what Moors have to take away from that one paragraph that we were reading. I think it was on page 136 of his opinion of Judge De Castro. So, today, we'll continue on reading a little bit more of that case. But I'd like to show the Moors a little bit more information today regarding decolonization because keep in mind, what are we studying right now? What is the purpose and intent, right? Of AMPAC study session as an educational platform? What are we really studying? It's called decolonization reforms. We're studying the substantive law and the procedure of law and the rule of law. So, you got the law and then it's the procedure on how to do what? Enforce the law. You see? All right, so let's go ahead and get into the class. All right, so what do I have on the board? Ah, this is the Constitution of Alodion Morris Pradium, Antay Kalorah, right? So, just as an update, AMPAC is the acronym. AMPAC has now changed our constitution, right? As of September 16, 2024, we have now officially voted under a referendum to change our constitution, all right? Now, keep in mind, the other Moore states have also agreed to change their constitution, all right? So, right now, all the Moore states, which is called the internal Moore states, have decided that it's proper to change the constitution and all of the internal Moore states at this time have identical constitutions. That way, all the Moors are uniting as interdependent states. We all have the same language in our constitution. So, this right here is a cover page. This constitution now has 106 articles. This constitution of our internal states has similar, not equivalent, but similar language of what constitution? Okay, let's take a look at it. Of the Empire of Morocco. This is the constitution for the Empire of Morocco, okay? This is the mother constitution. This is for the external state, right? That's the external state constitution, Empire of Morocco. That's the high contracting party on all the treaties because the parties must be known, right? So, the internal state constitution for AMPAC as an example because other Moore states, internal states, have a very similar constitution. This constitution comes under the protections. It comes under what? The sovereignty of the Empire of Morocco. Because who is the true sovereign of the land? That's Morocco. The Empire of Morocco is the sovereign state. And the sovereign state does what? It grants unlimited sovereignty to each of the internal Moors states. You see? So, that's what we gotta understand. We got a new constitution. I won't read over it today, but in the future, we'll read a little bit more about it, all right? Just wanted to say that for the record. All right, so, like I said, you got AMPAC's new constitution. And other internal states have the same constitution. Our internal states come under the umbrella protections of the Empire of Morocco's constitution because constitutions are paramount. All right, so it's all about the Empire of Morocco's flag. So, all the internal states pledge allegiance to what? The flag of the Empire of Morocco. They pledge allegiance to the flag of the Empire of Morocco because the flag represents what? The state. You see? So, let's take it to the board. In previous classes, I was asking this question. Who has the right of protections in Morocco? That's been the question, right? In the last couple of classes. Okay, well, here's the answer. The external state, okay? Let's start all over with the question. Who has a right of protection in Morocco? That's the question. The answer. The external state constitution of the Empire of Morocco and his Majesty the Sultan of Morocco per the Moroccan nationals' legal and political tie to the state throughout the Empire of Morocco. That's the answer. Let's go over to Q and A again. Who has a right of protections in Morocco? Answer. The external state constitution of the Empire of Morocco and his Majesty the Sultan of Morocco per the Moroccan nationals' legal and political tie to the state throughout the Empire of Morocco. That's the answer. So, who has a right of protection? Meaning, who has a right of what? Where we learn? What does right mean? What does right mean? It means what? Who has a right of what? Law. Well, what type of law? Public law, not private law. As soon as you say you have a charter that's your constitution, that's private law. But if you say you have a state constitution, that's public law. But then you just can't say it. Guess what you gotta do next? The constitution, right? The constitution, right? Of the Empire of Morocco was ratified and deposited with who? The United Nations, right? With the United Nations, right? Charter members according to Article 102 of the Charter. And who oversees Article 102 of the Charter? The Secretariat. So, Moors have to have, first of all, a state constitution and not a charter constitution. Then it must be ratified, right? Amongst the people. Then it has to be what? Deposited with the United Nations according to Article 102. That's called procedure. And once the constitution is deposited, then what happens next? Okay, it says the external state, which is the external state. Listen to me. An internal state is not the external state. If you look at the treaties, does the treaty say AMPAC? No. Does the treaty, treaty party say Moore Science Temple? No. Does the treaty say Cherokee Nation for Moors? No. Does it say Black Panthers? No. So, you gotta understand, when you're reading the treaties, the Moore's treaties, the party name matters. So, who is the external state? That's the Empire of Morocco. And anything other than that name is what? Inferior. It's subordinate. It's what you call a vassal. Remember in Class 152, we looked up the definition of vassal? What's a vassal? It is a person or country subordinate to another country or person. So, who's in a superior position? The Empire of Morocco. That's the state. And anything less than that, any name other than that is what? Inferior automatically. And this is why the United States and the several union states and the municipalities never had to respect Moors because Moors were using the wrong party name. Everything starts with the name of a state. Then you talk about your nationality because the state recognizes your nationality. So, what does it say in your constitution? What does it say your nationality is? If it don't say Moroccan, then immediately you got failed in the first box of contract law. First box of contract law, the parties must be known. So, who's the first party name? The state name, Empire of Morocco. What's the nationality of the people of the state? Moroccan. If you didn't check that box right off the top, you've lost. Right off the top. So, what have the Moors been leading with? Moore Science Temple. You failed. What have the Moors been leading with on my nationality? Morse American. You failed. What have black people been leading with? Oh, I'm part of Baptist church. You failed. But what's your nationality? Oh, I'm just black from Detroit. You failed. Oh, I'm part of a sovereign, soul Cherokee nation. Oh, you're a sovereign, soul Cherokee nation. Guess what? You failed. What's your nationality? Oh, we don't believe in nationality. I'm a sentient being. I'm just in Oregon. I'm just me. I just be. You failed. We as copper-colored people have absolutely failed because we never understood the definition of public law versus private law. All we had to do was read the treaties and study international law, but people don't study and that's the truth. I was in that same box. I just started studying international law until the year 2020. I was already in my 40s by the time I started studying, understanding who the heck I was. So, this is not about me chastising anyone because I was in the same boxes everybody else. Absolutely ignorant, right? Kindly known as uninformed. I was uninformed. And then guess what happened? I became what? Misinformed. Because I started searching around and said, "Okay, well, who am I?" Uh, somebody told me I was Morse American. I was like, "Okay, I'm going with that." Absolutely misinformed. Somebody else said, "No, no, man, you Indian. You Cherokee." I said, "Oh, okay." Misinformed. "No, no, man, you gotta be down with Black Panthers." Really? Okay, misinformed. "No, you just need to be a Christian. You need to be Muslim." Misinformed. So, we went from a status of being absolutely what? Uninformed, clueless. Then you got misinformed because people told you what? Truth and falsehood strangely mixed information that put you in a worse scenario. You're worse off being woke. Woke activism will get you in more trouble than simply just being what? Uninformed. Uninformed is actually safer than being misinformed because misinformed turns you into what? A crash test dummy.
Twilight Zone.
Yeah, you're in a twilight zone. You turn into a crash test dummy because you think you got some rights. That's what happens when you're misinformed. You know what they should call woke activism or misinformed? It's called three to five. That's what's next. See, you gotta understand, the world has moved on after 1945. They say you better study international law. That's Article 38 of the Statues of the International Court of Justice had already set forth the requirements, the principles of law, the rule of law, the custom of law, the practice of law. And everybody on planet Earth was supposed to study what? International law. And nobody did. So, you gotta understand, you wanna be in the woke activism? You better be woke, study international law. And understand it's all about what? The state. If you're not trying to establish a state, then you're wasting your time because you're gonna end up where? In state jail doing three to five. Soon as you wake up and say, "Uh, I'm Morse American." You know what Morse American means? Three to five. Soon as you wake up and say, "Uh, I'm Black Panthers." You know what Black Panthers mean? Three to five. Soon as you wake up and say, "I'm a sovereign citizen Cherokee soul." You know what Cherokee soul people get? Three to five. This is what's happening. Now, I know I'm being facetious, right? Serious and funny at the same time. But I'm talking to my people. I'm a representative of the people. I love the people. I'm here to teach education. You have to understand, I love all our people. I love our people. But this is called tough love. Sometimes I gotta clown you so you can see how foolishness, how the foolishness we've been doing as a people. We didn't study international law. We've been hoodwinked, bamboozled, and led astray by our leaders. People being in what? Foul ship and worship instead of being in what? Scholarship. But scholarship for what? International law was the answer to the test. And this is what happened to us. We think woke activism means we're on our way. No, it don't. It means you're stuck in what? Your stupor. What does stupor mean? You still sleep. You still sleep. And when you sleep, you might bump your toe and it's gonna hurt. She gotta understand, I love all the Moors. I love all the people that call themselves Black Indians. I love all the people that simply call themselves Black. I love all of y'all, I really do. I spent 153 classes, right, specific classes. Not just me rambling for two and a half hours, these are real classes to help the people. I'm here to help, but in order to help you, we gotta identify what? The problem, you ever went to see the doctor? You go in there, you start telling him your symptoms, you know what he's listening for? The problem. His job is to solve the problem, at least that's what doctors are supposed to do. But now they just treat symptoms, because they make so much money off of treating symptoms. Technically, there aren't any more doctors left, at least not in the United States jurisdiction. Back to point. So if you're not studying international law and understanding statehood, then you shall fail. That's the bottom line. All right, let's continue. So we got the flag for the Empire of Morocco, that's the national flag, that is her flag, her of state. Okay, next, Moors gotta keep understanding, it's about the Empire Morocco, right? What's the Empire Morocco? The external, sovereign, independence, right? Now, when you look at this tier structure, right, it's about the Sultan who's head of state. That's what we was learning in class 152, is about the Sultan and the Moors. Just the ICJ was talking about, right? So about the three branches of government, executive branch, legislative branch, and judicial branch, right? Because we have to put together our what? Self-governing territories. So how do you self-govern if you don't have three branches of government? Then it was all about what? What else are we starting to finally start getting, uh, going with? It's all about the Moors subjects. The Moors subjects have to return to Morocco, right? We're talking about those procedures slowly but surely. Moors subjects, right, have to return to Morocco and pledge allegiance to what? The state, what's the name of the state in Pamarocco? Did I make that up? No. It's not the supreme law of the land, but what's the reference point? Guess what? Treaty Madrid of July 3rd of 1880, Article 15, Paragraph 1 says what? Any subject of Morocco that's been naturalized in a foreign country shall return to Morocco. And do, and do what? Choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire. That's what the treaty says, and treaty supreme law of the land. So all the Moors have to do what? Return to Morocco and pledge allegiance to what? The Empire of Morocco. State. But whose head of state? His Majesty the Sultan of Morocco. So you pledge allegiance to the state, and when you pledge allegiance to the state, you're automatically doing what? Recognizing the office of Sultaness head of state, it's just that simple. So the Moors subjects have to return to Morocco and pledge allegiance to the Empire Morocco, and the Moors will be able to start working with the WRC Trustee Ship Council, which is the Wazir Regional Council, which are nothing but a, a, a board of governors over each of the territories. So almost like a governor's council, so Wazir means governor. So Wazir Regional Council, which is like a governor's regional council, has set up a trustee ship council to help Moors to return to Morocco, then we can start to understand the boxes they need to check. That way they can fill out a proper application, that way the state can then turn around and recognize you as being Moroccan. There's steps involved, listen. Then it's all about the internal Moors states. So your journey is to eventually get into an internal Moors state, like AMPAK. AMPAK as an example is an internal Moors state. And all the Moors have to be returned to a Moors state, right? Or establish an internal state, right? As an example, the Moors, let's say in, uh, South Dakota. The South Dakota Moors have to establish what? An internal state. So they need what? Constitution, flag, seal, right? They gotta check all the boxes, and who's gonna assist them with that? The trustee ship council, the WRC trustee ship council will help them with all that. What else they gotta do? Pledge allegiance to what? The Empire of Morocco, the WRC trustee ship council will help them with all that. Now, what everybody has to understand, I too have to take those same steps, right? All the Moors of AMPAK had to do what? All the Moors of AMPAK recognized that we were Moors subjects, including myself. I started off as a Moors subject. What does Moors subject mean? You still naturalized in a foreign country's jurisdiction. So also a United States citizen. As a what? Moors subject, because I got adopted in the 14th Amendment of the United States. And then the Sultan of Morocco signed a treaty with the United States and other European states and allowed the European states to naturalize the Moors, to adopt them, and call the Moors by the nationality of the geographical territory wherever the Moors were. So if they was in United, with the United States territory, they were called Americans. They was in Canada's territory, they was called Canadians. If the Moroccans was in British territory, they was called British citizens. If, if the Moors, i.e. Moroccans, was in France territory, they was called French citizens. But to reality, they were all Moroccans who got naturalized, okay? Listen, what do I have up here? Okay. I have a question, all right? And the question is reasons follows, Good Brother Dre.
What is the purpose and intent of pledging allegiance to the state of the Empire Morocco and the Sultan?
All right, Paul, so the question is, what is the purpose and intent of pledging allegiance to the state of the Empire Morocco and the Sultan? You see, keep in mind, when you pledge allegiance to the state, you automatically pledge allegiance to what? The office of Sultan, right? Okay, well, what's the answer? Okay, from the top, Good Brother Dre.
The question, what is the purpose and intent of pledging allegiance to the state of the Empire Morocco and the Sultan? Declaration of Independence and Continuation of the Nation? Decolonization and the end of colonization? Renunciation of Naturalization? Repatriation to our mother nation? Moroccan dedication and liberation? Legal, judicial, economic, and social protections? And a long-lasting legacy of the state for future generations?
That is the basic concept of why Moors shall, based upon the treaty, say, you shall return to Morocco. But you have to what? Choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire, they gave you a choice. You can remain naturalized by the colonists, or you can choose to pledge your allegiance back to what? The empire. Well, what's the empire? Morocco, well, what's Morocco? A state. So what's the question? Let's talk benefits, right, because people love to talk about benefits, they always ask, uh, what's in it for me? Right? Here we go. So what is the purpose and intent of pledging allegiance to the state of the Empire Morocco and the Sultan? That's the question. Okay, here's somewhat of an answer, okay? What is, here, here's, here's one of the benefits, it's a declaration of independence and continuation of the nation. It's also about decolonization and the end of colonization, that's a benefit. Don't you wanna decolonize and end colonization? What's another benefit? It's about renunciation of naturalization, because the Moors got colonized first, then they got naturalized, you see? What's another benefit? Okay, it's about repatriation to our mother nation. Don't you rather represent your mother nation rather than your adopted mother nation? You would think that would be a benefit to represent your biological family versus your adopted family. Listen. It's all about what? Moroccan dedication and liberation, so it's about dedication and liberation to what? Your freedom. In order to maintain your freedom, you gotta be dedicated to the state, because the state is what's offering you and protecting your freedom. So you gotta have dedication before you get liberation, you see? Listen, what's another benefit? It's about the legal, judicial, economic, and social protections. So it's a benefit to pledge allegiance to the state, because you'll get legal protections. You'll get judicial protections. You'll get economic and social protections. Last but not least, because this list is not, uh, exhaustive, right? It's not an exhaustive list, it's just a couple of benefits. It's about what? What's a benefit? It's long-lasting legacy of the state for future generations. Your children will benefit on what you do today. Because think about it, our parents, 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 since they did not decolonize, right, in the past, we, we copper-colored people who are living in the present of the year 2024 are still dealing with what? Colonization and naturalization, because our parents, parents, parents didn't decolonize. So we have to decolonize, right? Today, for us who are living, but then the living will that we signed today, the living will we signed today is what? The constitution for who? It's about what? Long-lasting legacy of the state for future generations. We gotta do something for the future. We already know what our past is. We know what our present is. But we can set up our intentional future for ourselves and living today, as well as do something for the future generations. We gotta plant a seed and let it grow, we gotta nurture it. A fruit tree that will produce residual effects and effects and effects for hundreds of years. You gotta understand what a constitution does. The United States of America's had their constitution, their second constitution, since 1789. 1789. And right now, they still operate underneath their constitution. They don't get me wrong, they changed it in 1871 to the Federal Corporation Constitution. But the United States is a representative of the United States of America. So their original constitution of the United States of America of 1789, which is George Washington Constitution, it's just in a shallow grave, it ain't gone nowhere, it still exists, they didn't dissolve it. They just created what? An intergovernmental organization to act as a representative, a trustee on behalf of the United States of America's, Constitution of 1789. Now they operate under the Constitution of the United States of 1871. But they're still operating since 1871 under their constitution. This is what constitutions do, they give future generations an opportunity to sit in the seats of power. Can understand what this is all about. Listen, in class 152, we were going over the Western Sahara case. So today, we'll pick up on this and read just a little bit more. And, and after that, I'm gonna show you a little bit of a video, okay? The video is about, maybe about 25 minutes, but first, let's, let's pick up where we left off. We're gonna read about the Western Sahara a little bit more. I'm gonna talk about the Western Sahara probably in the next few classes to come, that way everybody already knows what to anticipate, just to let you know, we'll keep reading over the Western Sahara case, especially over Judge DeCastro's opinion, because he keeps it real, all right? Okay, as a reminder, uh, this was the International Court of Justice Advisory Opinion to Western Sahara of 1975. Let's read the overview of the case again, Brother Dre.
Overview of the case. On 13 December 1974, the General Assembly requested an advisory opinion on the following questions, quote, unquote, unquote, excuse me, question 1. Uh, 1 was Western Sahara, the Rio de Oro, and Sacia Ill Habra at the time of colonization by Spain, a territory belonging to no one, Terra Nulis. If the answer to the question, first question, is in the negative, 2. What were the legal ties between this territory and the Kingdom of Morocco and the Mauritanian entity? In its advisory opinion delivered on 16 October 1975, the court replied to question 1 in the negative. In reply to question 2, it expressed the opinion that the materials and information presented to it showed the existence, at the time of Spanish colonization, of legal ties of allegiance between the Sultan of Morocco and some of the living tribe, and some of the tribes living in the territory of, uh, Western Sahara. They equally showed the existence of rights, including some rights related to the land, which constitute legal ties between the Mauritanian entity, as understood by the court, and the territory of Western Sahara. On the other hand, the court's conclusion was that the materials and information presented to it did not establish any type of territorial sovereignty between the territory of Western Sahara and the Kingdom of Morocco or the Mauritanian entity. Thus, the court did not find any legal ties of such a nature as might affect the application of the General Assembly's 1960 Resolution 1514 containing the Declaration on the Granting of Independence to colonial countries and peoples in the decolonization of Western Sahara and in particular of the principle of self-determination through the free and genuine expression of the will of the peoples of the territory.
All right, thank you very much. So what was the case about, really and truly? It was about decolonization, you see that? So the Western Sahara people were trying to decolonize. But instead, the Kingdom of Morocco, which was a brand-new state on planet Earth after year 1956, and the Mauritanian state, which was a brand-new state on planet Earth that wasn't established until the year what? 1960. They were both trying to make claims to what? The Western Sahara, listen to me. What's the four elements of a contract? The parties must be known. Okay, if you're saying you're the king of Morocco, or you're saying you're Mauritania as a state, then those are brand-new states on planet Earth. You can't retroactively go back and claim some territory now that you've changed your name on the contract. So there was no Mauritania claim, because there was no Mauritania prior to what? 1960. King Morocco couldn't make a claim, because there was no King Morocco prior to what? 1956. And both of those states was trying to make a claim to a land, claiming that they owned it or they were the masters of that land, because they were thinking retroactively. But they could not go backwards retroactively, because the party who could only make a claim to that territory was what? The Empire Morocco and the Sultan. And the King Morocco is not the empire, and the King Morocco don't have a Sultan. The Mauritanian people, that's a new state of 1960, so they couldn't make a claim to the Western Sahara either. Because there was no Mauritania prior to 1960, so they couldn't say they owned that land as a brand-new name. So in the four elements of the contract, the parties must be known, so they both failed in their attempt to claim the land. What's the second box to, to four elements of contract? Who's superior, who's inferior? So both King Morocco and Mauritania lost their claim, because they were inferior in the contract. What contract? Oh, Western Sahara, who also was claiming to be a new state, because that's a new name, Western Sahara, had just as much right to be an independent, brand-new state, just like the King Morocco and Mauritania. See, it's all about the name you're using. If you change your name, it resets everything. So the Western Sahara people have a right to declare their independence under a brand-new name called the Sahari people. See, Western Sahara, that's the name of the state. So even though they were Moors in that territory, they were claiming a brand-new state name, they wasn't saying their Pamarocco. They wasn't pledging their allegiance to their Pamarocco. They wasn't pledging their allegiance to the Sultan. So you gotta understand, as soon as they changed their name, the Western Sahara people, they had a right to their independence, but by them becoming a brand-new state, guess what happened? They didn't come under the protections of the Empire Morocco. The Western Sahara people did not come under the protections of the Sultan, because they wanted independence. Next thing you know, King Morocco still annexed after 1975. Why? Because the Western Sahara people didn't have the protections of the Empire Morocco and the Sultan. You gotta understand what happened? But see, people want, they don't wanna talk out loud like this, because nobody really wants to talk about the Sultan. Because you talk about the Sultan, you gotta talk about who? The Moors, you see? Okay, listen. So this case was really about decolonization versus annexation. But what were they using for their defense? What was the Western Sahara people using as their defense? They were using the Charter of the United Nations as well as what? They were using the Charter of the United Nations as well as what? They were using what? They were using the Declaration on the Granting of what? Independence to colonial countries, which was what? And peoples, which is what? It's resolution fifteen fourteen of what? December fourteen nineteen sixty. So even the Western Sahara people were using the United Nations Charter, right, Article seventy three and seventy four, right, to decolonize. And United Nations established a resolution called fifteen fourteen in the year nineteen sixties. This is what Western Sahara people were using in the seventies and sixties. Desert people, nomads knew more about international law than the Moors over here. Where the United Nations Charter headquarters is located, Manhattan, New York. The Big Apple. But yet Moors in the desert knew more about the United Nations Charter and how to use its provisions for its legal defense. To do, do the what? Decolonize. Okay, so now let's go back and read a little bit more about what the judge was saying about these Moors, okay? So here's the, the advisory opinion that was written by who? Who wrote this advisory opinion in the case of Western Sahara? Well, it was who? Western Sahara, right? Separate opinion by who? Judge De Castro, we're on page one fifty. And one fifty, Judge De Castro starts talking about who? These who? These independent Moors, you see that? Independent Moors, you see what he's doing? He's not calling them by their tribal names. He's calling them Moors straight up. Why? Cause that's the name in the treaties. He's using the proper party names. Then he started talking about who? The Sultan. Why is he talking about the Sultan? Cause that's the proper party name in the treaties. It doesn't refer to the people as Sahari people. It refers to people as what? Moors, says the Moorish government, the Moroccan government in the treaties. It says the Moorish subjects in the treaties. And it always refers to the Sultan as the Sultan, or refers to him as who? His Sharifian Majesty. You see? So in this case, Judge De Castro gives his opinion, right? So let's go back down to, uh, let's go to page one thirty six, that's where we left off in class one fifty two, okay? So it's about the Western Sahara Separate Opinion of Judge De Castro, page one thirty six, okay? So we were reading this particular paragraph, okay? Does the Moors know? Just a moment, okay? We were reading over this paragraph, alright? Well, let's, let's back it up, one paragraph to see where Judge De Castro was going with all of this, right? Now, here's what Moors gotta understand. Let's read what I have on the board again. It says what? Who has the right of protections in Morocco? The answer is the external state, constitution, Empire Morocco, and his master, the Sultan of Morocco per the Moroccan nationals' legal and political tie, listen. It's all about your legal and political tie to what? The state, it's all about the state, you must have a legal or political tie to the state, meaning you gotta pledge allegiance to the state. Listen to me. They were reading over the Moors treaties. The Moors treaty of what? Treaty Madrid eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph one said Moors have to return to Morocco if they still naturalize or colonize and do what? Choose between entire submission to what? The laws of the empire. So if the Moors don't do that, then the Moors can continue to be colonized or naturalized and potentially even what? Annexed. Cause the Moors aren't following the instructions of the treaties. So it's all about the legal and political tie, that's what we've already learned. We're gonna read a little bit more about Judge De Castro, and I'm gonna show you something different, right? Then we're gonna come back to this case, gonna keep going over this case, alright? Over the next couple of classes, but listen, we left off on this paragraph, okay, on page one thirty six, let's back it up. Now we're on page what? On page, one more page up, page one thirty five, okay, one thirty five. It's already about the question regarding the nature of what? Legal tie, you see what's already happening? It's already about what? The legal ties. This is what Judge De Castro is talking about now, the legal ties, you see that? What does legal tie mean? Did you pledge your allegiance back to what? The entire submission to the laws of the empire. Judge De Castro is reading the Moors treaties. And he said, did these Moors follow instructions of the Western Sahara? Listen to me. Did they follow instructions? No. You know what they decided to do? Pledge their independence under a different name. And now they're dealing with annexation. Cause they're all by themselves. They did not come under the umbrella of protections of the Empire Morocco for the Sultan to protect the Western Sahara Moors. So Judge De Castro is sitting here looking at it and saying, well, these Moors didn't follow the instructions to make a legal tie, right, to what? To what? They had to, to the entire submission to the laws of the empire, meaning you have to consent back to the state. Not to the Sultan, but to the state. The Treaty Madrid, right? Of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph one says, you have to do what? Choose between entire submission to what? The empire. Did they choose the Sultan? No. You see how the judges are looking at this? Judge, Moors gotta follow instructions? Okay, so let's, let's, let's read a little bit of this, listen. What, what did Judge De Castro do? He put on here, legal ties with the territory, you see how he breaking it down? He's making a distinction. Do you have a legal tie to the territory, or do you have a legal tie to some individual under private law? Or do you have a public law tied to what? The state. You see how he breaking it down into subsections? He says right here, legal ties with what? The territory, but the territory is what? The state. So he's asking the question. Did the Moors pledge allegiance to the Empire State? Or did they pledge allegiance to the Sultan directly? You must follow instructions. Treaties are particular. Sometimes when you read treaties, you read treaties in a strict sense. Listen to me. Treaties don't require interpretation oftentimes. The treaty just is what it is. The treaty of the Treaty Madrid of eighteen eighty preamble said what? Is what? It's fixed on a uniform basis, that's what the preamble says, correct? So the judge at ICJ said, well, if this treaty is fixed on a uniform basis, and it said these Moors have to pledge allegiance to what? The Empire Morocco. Now it's calling legal tie of consent to the state, which is the territory. See how the judge is looking at it? Okay, now watch this, okay, uh, brother Drake, type.
Legal ties with the territory. The term legal ties is extraordinarily wide, whether one considers all the possible categories of ties, or all the factors that could give those ties legal character. Ties can arise from proximity, from a treaty, or from war, or they can flow from an unlawful act responsibility. There are territorial ties, personal ties, ties of sovereignty, of servitude, of sus- uh, serenity, of fealty, of vassalage, to say nothing of all the other ties of feudal character. According to their legal source, they can be in, um, international ties of public or private law, of state law, of canon law, or a Muslim law based on the Sahara. Um, Sharia, excuse me.
Okay. So what is Judge De Castro saying here? He's talking legal ties, but he's saying, there's different types of legal ties, right? But he's talking territory, you see how he pressing on the top? He's talking territory. Is there a territory tie, or there are other different facets of legal ties? There's a difference between what? What did he mention first? Which one of the things he talks about? He talked about what? Public or private law, you see, he's talking different ties. So Moors American got a title who? Moore Science Temple, which is a religious corporation. And they have an allegiance to who? No Badra Ali, no disrespect to No Badra Ali. We're having conversation, we're talking about what the ICJ judges are pointing out, he's pointing out, where there's ties of public law, and there's ties of private law, you see what he pointing out? But he knows which one has superior position, he knows which one's inferior, but he's pointing out all these ties. But he knows the Moors failed to do what? Have a public, public, public tie to what? The state. Why does he say the Moors have to have a public tie to the state? Cause the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph one said the Moors have to do what? Choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire. It didn't say to the Sultan. It didn't say to the Moore Science Temple, it didn't say to the Baptist Church. It didn't say to a Cherokee nation. He said empire, Empire what? Morocco. See how simple this is so far? Okay, let me read this again. Okay, listen, this is judges talking. Judges at the ICJ, and guess who's gonna end up in front of the ICJ one day? The Empire Morocco state and the Moors? Will most likely be at the ICJ dealing with what? A disgruntled European state that don't wanna adhere to the treaties in Morocco also. More than likely, it's a high probability, the Moors will end up at the ICJ. But what type of Moors? The Moors will pledge allegiance to a lit- a legal and political tie to the state, you see? Now do you understand why the Moore Science Temple could never take the United States to the ICJ since nineteen forty five? Cause Moore Science Temple is not a state. And it certainly is not the high contracting party name on the treaties, what's on the treaty? Morocco, Empire Morocco. What's the nationality of the people? Moroccans. Listen, so Judge De Castro, he says legal ties with the territory, see, he's giving you the answer already. And reasons follows, the term legal ties is extraordinarily wide. Whether one considers all the possible categories of ties, or all the factors that could give those ties a legal character. Ties can arise from proximity, from a treaty, or from war. Or they can flow from an unlawful act responsibility. There are territorial ties, personal ties, ties of sovereignty, of servitude, or serenity, of fealty, of vassalage, to say nothing of all the other ties of feudal character. According to their legal source, they can be international, ties of public or private law, of state law, or canon law, or a Muslim law based on the Sharia. You see all these ties he's talking about? But he tells you, asks you to the test, you should have what? Territorial tie, what's that? Leads you to what? State, after what year? Nineteen forty five. But prior to nineteen forty five, the charter coming out, didn't the Treaty of Madrid come out in eighteen eighty? Nearly sixty five years before the Charter of the United, United Nations came out in nineteen forty five, the Treaty of Madrid came out in eighteen eighty. And the Treaty of Madrid said Moors have to pledge allegiance to the state. After nineteen forty five, it became confirmed, cause everybody had to pledge allegiance to a state after nineteen forty five, cause about state rights. So even before the charter came out, Moors already had an obligation to pledge allegiance to the state. Are you hearing what I'm saying? So by the time these judges are looking at our treaties, plus looking at the charter, and looking at the statutes of the International Court of Justice, Article thirty eight, says all about international law for civilized nations, and civilized nations, which is the people, have to pledge allegiance to what? The state. So he's talking legal tie to the state, but then he turned around and said, yeah, it's all kind of ties. But then he turned around and starts breaking it down some more, listen, continue.
It is therefore necessary to inquire into the sense in which the term is used in the resolution, which is possible having regard to the formulation of the second question and it, and to its rela- uh, relation with the first. The words, the legal ties between this territory and the Kingdom of Morocco indicate the category of ties it, uh, envisaged, uh, vic- viculum juris between a territory, which is the object of the ties in question, and a body public, which is a state.
Pause. So here he goes, he's starting to nar- he's starting to narrow dice at all those ties. Now he's starting to narrow it down to what? The state. See right here where I highlighted? He narrowed it down to what? A body politic. But what's a body politic? He puts in parentheses, which is a state. So there's all types of body politi- uh, uh, body politics, isn't it? But which one matters? The state body politic, not your dang own charters. What type of charters? Private law charters of your religious corporations. That's private law, not public law, cause public law is the state, capital S. Let me read it again. It is therefore necessary to inquire to the sense in which the term is used in the resolution, which is possible having regard to the formulation of the second question and its relations with the first. The words, the legal ties between this territory, see that? Legal tie between the territory, territory is what? State, listen. And the Kingdom of Morocco indicate the category of ties envisaged in viculum juris between a territory, which means what? Which is the object of the ties in question, what's the object of the tied question? Is it a legal tie to the state? That's the question. He continues to say what? And a body politic which is a state, is a state. He's narrowing it down, you see what's happening? Cause the Moors supposed to pledge allegiance back to what? The Empire Morocco state. Okay, listen, right?
What is involved in the state ties relating to two specific areas?
Pause, read again.
What is involved is the state ties relating to two specific areas.
Okay, here he goes again. What is involved in the state ties? That's the question. Question to who? Independent Moors. Did the Moors pledge allegiance back to the Empire Morocco? That's the question. Did the Moors of the Western Sahara pledge allegiance back to Empire Morocco? No. The state. Did some of the Moors pledge allegiance directly to the Sultan? Yes. Was that the instructions in the Treaty of Madrid of July third eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph one? No. See what's happening? He's narrowing it down to the state.
Listen, what is involved is the state, is the state ties relating to two specific areas. The Rio de Oro and the Sacia El Hamra. Their legal nature is made plain by the relation existing between the two questions. In the first question, the court was asked whether or not the territory had been a territory belonging to no one, sons of a tear, in the French text. The second question, supplementing the first, amounted to asking who, if the territory was not without a master, had been its master or owner at the time of colonization by Spain? Was it Morocco? Was it the Mauritanian entity? The expression legal ties must be understood to mean state ties relating to the territory and capable of having the value of a legal title to lay claim to the territory, that is to say, a right of sovereignty over the territory.
You see that? Judge De Castro. He's talking about what? The expression legal ties must be understood to mean state ties.
That's the answer.
Relating to the territory and capable of having the value of legal title to lay claim to the territory. That is to say, a right of sovereignty over the territory. So what has sovereignty over territory? The state. But what's the name of the state? It is what? The Empire Morocco. He's talking legal ties, talking political ties. So let me read the question and answer again. Brother Joseph, please.
Who has the right of protections in Morocco? Answer. The external state constitution of the Empire of Morocco and His Majesty the Sultan of Morocco per the Moroccan nationals' legal and political tie to the state throughout the Empire of Morocco.
ICJ nineteen seventy-five. We're in the year two, what? Two thousand twenty-four? Twenty twenty-four. Nearly fifty years ago, they said this out loud about Moors. Independent Moors. I started off showing you independent Moors. Why don't Moors know about the fact they have to pledge allegiance to a legal and political tie to the state? You know why? Because the FBI, right? CIA? COINTELPRO. You must understand. Let me, let me set the record straight. The United States of America and all the other European states, et cetera, always knew what the obligation was of Moors. So their job was to prevent the Moors from ever pledging their allegiance back to the Empire Morocco State and His Majesty the Sultan. And the best way they could go about doing that was to punk the Morse Science Temple after they assassinated Nobu Drahili. Noble came out and said, we're descendants of Moroccans. Then he turned around and said, but unfortunately, we've been naturalized in America. Because of the Fourteenth Amendment. And because of these Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph two, said that Moors, who are still under the status of being naturalized, still come under civil and criminal jurisdiction of the United States of America, the United States, the several Union States and their municipalities as what? Americans, instead of being what? Moroccans. Noble tried to tell you, you're Moroccan. The FBI said, oh, no, we can't have that. Next you know Noble's gone. And after that, the FBI said, Morse Science Temple, you better say you're Americans or else. Nation Islam, you better say you're black and proud or else. You see what's happening? This is what's happening. The name of the game is to keep the copper colored people from finding out they're what? Moroccans. But the only way to be recognized as Moroccan, the state has to recognize you as being Moroccan. Oh, you say you're Italian? Okay. Show me your Italian identification from Italy. You ain't got it. So therefore, you ain't Italian. You see what's happening? People run around saying, oh, I'm Irish. Oh, for real? Okay, show me you got identification from Ireland. You ain't got it. So you ain't Irish. Oh, you say you're Moroccan? Okay, show me somebody that's your Moroccan. Guess what? J-Bay got nationality card, i.e. called what? State ID, not a nationality card, but a state ID.
Ties to the state.
From the state. The Empire Morocco right now already started making state IDs for the Empire Morocco for all its Moroccan nationals. It's coming. All to be official identification cards that was assigned from what? The state. That way, when I turn around and say, I'm a Moroccan national, they say, I don't believe you. I say, well, here you go. Here's all my Moroccan. It's what? State ID, not no dang old charter ID. State ID. Not no nationality card from RB Bay Publications, which is an e-commerce website that will never tell you that it's a state. RB Bay Publications, don't say they're state. But they're disingenuous when they say, let me sign off on your nationality card. It's not state ID. It's fraudulent. It's because they're running what? An e-commerce platform. It's about money. You gotta understand what's happening. The Moors have been what? Hoodwink, bamboozle, and led astray. Because the people sitting at the top of these pyramid schemes ain't doing nothing but taking your money. And then you end up with what? Three to five. Watch anybody who calls themselves Indians. Watch, they're gonna charge you for every little thing. Next you know, you're gonna be doing what? Three to five. Watch what I tell you. I love all of our people, but some of our people, in my opinion, love to be associated with foolishness. Listen. I'm gonna read it again from here, brother Dre.
The expression legal ties must be understood to mean state ties relating to the territory and capable of having the value of a legal title to lay claim to the territory. That is to say, a right of sovereignty over the territory.
Only way you can have sovereignty is to have a state. The state has sovereignty over the land. So you need to have what? What type of tie? Legal, right? Legal tie. Or political tie. Doesn't the Rights of Indigenous People, which is the Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People of the year two thousand seven? When you go to Article five, it says what? You need to what? A political. Then it said what? Legal. Right? You know what it says? Political first, Article five. Rights of Indigenous People, first word was what? Political. Because it's telling you, you need what? A legal tie. So political tie and legal tie, same thing. Because the tie to what? The state. So in the Rights of Indigenous People, Article five, it has five principles, right? It says what first? Political. Then it says what? Legal. Then it says what? Economic, social, and cultural institutions. Of what? The state. It says, if you so choose. Article five, if you so choose, that's what it says in the Rights of Indigenous People. This is too easy. That came out in two thousand seven. This case came out in nineteen seventy-five or maybe. Moors don't follow instructions. This is too easy. Something ain't right. Something is not right amongst our community leaders. Something ain't right. We're gonna get to the bottom of it. Because Empire Morocco is going to pass bills that start to say that propaganda is a criminal or civil act. It's coming. We're gonna stop this propaganda that's undermining the people. Don't even trip. It's coming. The RICO Act is coming. Let's continue what Judge De Castro was saying.
Excuse me. Morocco put the question thus. Where are the two territories of the Sahara, Rio de Oro, and Sakia El Hamra at the moment of occupation under the sovereignty and administration of the Moroccan state? That corresponds to his assertions that the two provinces, uh, the two provinces of Western Sahara fall under our sovereignty. I bid. And that prior to Spanish colonization, Morocco had exercised sovereignty over these territories in accordance with the conditions laid down by public international law.
All right, so once again, Judge De Castro is asking a question. Is this about state rights of sovereignty that King Morocco claiming? Mauritania is claiming this under state rights? No. Why couldn't they claim under state rights? Because they were both brand new states on planet Earth. King Morocco, nineteen fifty-six. Mauritania, state nineteen sixty. They could not go retroactively and claim some land because they were brand new states and the parties must be known. Who's the only state that could have made a claim to the Western Sahara? The Empire Morocco and the Sultan. But those Moors, that territory, still would have to recognize what?
The state.
The state. Because of the free will of the people. And once they recognize the state, they automatically recognize who? His Majesty the Sultan, which is their office. See what's happening? Moors gotta follow instructions or they're gonna remain what? Colonized, naturalized, or what? Annexed. That's what's gonna happen. Now I got a lot of love for the Western Sahara people. I really do. But you gotta understand. At the time of the nineteen sixties and seventies, there was no Sultan for them to pledge allegiance to. There was no Empire Morocco for them to pledge allegiance to. The Empire Morocco was in a shallow grave in the nineteen sixties. The Empire Morocco was in a shallow grave in the nineteen seventies. So you know what they should have did in the Western Sahara? Some of the Moors should have got together and say, we're gonna do a Declaration of Independence and put together what? The Empire Morocco again. That's what they should have did in the sixties and seventies. They didn't do it. You gotta understand what's happening here. It's Excalibur. Excalibur is stuck in a stone. Whoever pulls it out is what? King, i.e. Sultan. Well, who pulled it out? The stone. The Sultan pulled it out. But before the Sultan could pull it out, first we had to establish what? The state. The state is called what? Empire Morocco. Then we elected a person to sit in the seat of His Majesty the Sultan's office, and who was that? Okay, listen. Who was that? As Abdul Smith Al Khabir pulled out Excalibur. But he could not pull it out. Abdul Smith Al Khabir, the Sultan of the Empire Morocco, right? He was elected Sultan by the people on May twelve, twenty twenty-four. The Excalibur was just sitting there for decades after nineteen fifty-six in a stone. What's the stone? The state, the land, the territory. And since the Arabs left Excalibur stuck in the stone, guess who could pull it out? A Moor. But what's the nationality of Moor? Moroccan. The Western Sahara people would not call themselves Moroccan. You gotta catch what I'm saying? So any Moors who declared themselves as Moroccan nationals to establish the state again as the Empire Morocco could have pulled out Excalibur as long as other Moors had started recognizing that person that was sitting in the state office to make it fully manifested. That's what's happening right now. Moors across the territories are starting to pledge their allegiance back to the state of the constitution of Empire Morocco. They're pledging allegiance. They're recognizing His Majesty the Sultan. That's an office. And who sits in the office? Abdul Smith Al Khabir. So the FBI, the CIA, Homeland Security, Department of Justice, et cetera, along with Canada, Great Britain, France, Germany, et cetera, they never wanted the Moors to truly find out the substantive law of your treaties and the procedure on how to enforce your treaties. You see what's happening? You gotta understand what's happening. So what did they do? What did the Europeans do? They gave us Black History Month. To do what? To be disingenuous that way little children in school grow up thinking they're black. Instead of growing up understanding they are Moors subject according to treaties and Moors subject have an obligation to return to Morocco to be recognized as what? Moroccans. Here's further proof that the United States always knew you were Moroccans. Uh, uh, brother Joseph, can you read this from the top?
Right of protection in Morocco. Convention signed at Madrid, July third, eighteen eighty. Effective from July third, eighteen eighty. Ratifications exchanged at Tangier, May first, eighteen eighty-one. Senate advice and consent to ratification, May fifth, eighteen eighty-one. Ratified by the President of the United States, May tenth, eighteen eighty-one. Proclaimed by the President of the United States, December twenty-first, eighteen eighty-one. Ratification of the United States deposited at Tangier, March ninth, eighteen eighty-two. Amendment implementation and termination in part. Provision of the General Act of Algiers of April seventh, nineteen oh six. Prevail over any conflicting provisions, Article eleven implemented by Article sixty of the General Act. Extraterritorial jurisdiction in Morocco relinquished by the United States, October sixth, nineteen fifty-six. Article fifteen relating to Moroccan nationality obsolete and without effect. Twenty-two stat eight one seven, treaty series two forty-six.
All right, so look at the stuff right here, the last sentence. Article fifteen, Article fifteen of what? Treaty of Madrid of July third, eighteen eighty. Relating to Moroccan nationality obsolete without effect. So the United States is saying, your Moroccan nationality is obsolete? Well, how could your Moroccan nationality be obsolete if you wasn't Moroccan in the first place? Listen, I'm gonna say it again. How could the United States, listen. How could the United States say your Moroccan nationality is obsolete if you wasn't Moroccans in the first place? Listen to what I'm saying. You was Moroccans. So your nationality was Moroccan. Then the United States tried to strike Article fifteen to say that you could no longer declare yourself as Moroccans again. See, they've always known the copper colored people are not Americans. They know the copper colored people are not Canadians. They're not British. They're not German. They're not French. They're what? Moroccans. Moroccans. So why would the United States need to say your nationality of Moroccan is obsolete if you wasn't Moroccan? You were Moroccans. Now you've been naturalized as what? Americans, Canadian, British, Jamaican, et cetera. You gotta understand what's happening here. We've been sold out. And Judge De Castro has said, okay. Are these Moors sitting there, Moroccans? See what he's doing? Who is the only person can recognize you as being Moroccan again? Who can extend Moroccan nationality to you only what?
The state.
The state. This is what Judge De Castro is saying under what? Legal ties or political ties to what? The state, because only the state can recognize you as being what? Moroccan. So they turn around and put the Empire Morocco in a shallow grave that had no Sultan and it had no government and had no more Moroccans. It was stuck in what? Excalibur. The Arabs, listen to me. The Arabs, Mohammed the Fifth left the seat of Sultan in the stone like Excalibur. He left it there on March second, nineteen fifty-six. That's where he left it. And after that, he was deemed what? A lame duck Sultan. For about approximately a year after that, as he was tying up loose ends, he was in a lame duck status after March second, nineteen fifty-six, Mohammed the Fifth. Lame duck Sultan. Because he had other needs to step down. You see what's happening? Till soon Mohammed the Fifth stepped down, he left the Empire Morocco in a shallow grave along with the office, which is Excalibur and a shallow grave. So now you fast forward to nineteen seventy-five, and here comes the King Morocco trying to make a claim. But the King Morocco know they're kings and not Sultan. King Morocco know they're not the empire. They are what? A kingdom. Couldn't make a claim. But what's the most important part? The Western Sahara people had already declared their independence. They were using the charter and universal declaration, right? Such as what? UN Resolution fifteen fourteen of nineteen sixty- UN Resolution fifteen fourteen of nineteen sixty to get their rights. Listen. We're talking decolonization because the Moors have to do what? Moors have to decolonize in order to get their Moroccan nationality back. Right? Okay, listen. We're gonna go over a case called what? We've been on this before. This is about the Mauritius people, the Mauritius Island. We went over this case. Right? The advisory opinion came out in the year twenty nineteen. Just five years ago, this case came out. Okay? It's about the Mauritius, the Mauritius Island, right? Which is right outside of Madagascar, okay? What was the name of the case? It was the legal consequences of the separation of the Chagos Archipelago from the Mauritius Islands, right? So this was the case, this is an overview of the case. We won't read it just yet. Right? But this case is about decolonization. It's about, listen. This case is about what? Decolonization. See that? Of who? Mauritius. But look at that word, Mauritius. Decolonization of who? See Mauritius? You see it? That's how it's pronounced, right? Huh, really? Mauritius? Moorish? Moorish? Mauritius, Moorish. You see it? All the islands are named after Moors. Just like Mauritania. Mari-tish. Mauritius, Mauritania, Mars, Moors, Mers. You see? It's the Moorish, Moorish. It was a Moorish state. See? It was about decolonization in the case. Now I'm about to show you about twenty-five minutes of a, of the twenty nineteen case, okay? I'm, I'm jumping around a little bit. We were, we were going over the Western Sahara Advisory Opinion of nineteen seventy-five. Now I'm gonna fast forward real quick to the year twenty nineteen. In twenty nineteen, there was an advisory opinion about the Mauritius Island that the United Kingdom, i.e. Great Britain and the United States, was trying to establish another colony on those islands. So it was about the islanders decolonizing and wanting their complete independence. Not just part independence. They wanted all their islands. And they went to the ICJ and guess what? They won. And the advisory opinion that the General Assembly members of the United Nations had motioned, the ICJ, saying, "We got a couple of questions for you regarding the Mauritius people." And the ICJ answered the question and they ruled in favor of those islanders of the Mauritius Islands regarding what? Decolonization. Also about what? Complete decolonization, not part of the islands, all of the islands. And the UK lost. The United States lost. Why is that important to Moors to understand in the year twenty twenty-four? All we have to do is also start understanding what? We needed what? Legal tie and a political tie to what? Our state so that we could decolonize. You can't decolonize without what? A state. Judge Castro is trying to tell the Moors, "You gotta follow your treaty instructions because only the state can have sovereignty over the land." Okay, we're gonna listen to about twenty-five minutes of the case. I'm going to start this at the twenty-nine minute mark. So the name on YouTube, you can find this on the UN Call for UK to end administration of B-I-O-T-T, excuse me, B-I-O-T, Territory, Chagos, February twenty nineteen. All right? You can find that on YouTube. We're gonna start at the twenty-nine minute mark. All right? We're gonna listen to about twenty-five minutes up until maybe the fifty-minute mark, okay? Fifty-minute mark from, so from twenty-nine minute mark to the fifty-minute mark, okay? And listen. Now he's gonna talk about decolonization. He's gonna talk about international law. He's gonna tell all the indigenous people, "You gotta utilize international law as your legal defense." You gotta utilize international law what? As your legal argument. It's about law. What type of law? Public law. It's not about private law. Okay? So listen to him very closely, okay? All right, here we go.
Having reviewed the factual background of the present request for an advisory opinion, the court examines the two questions brought by the General Assembly. Some participantes have asked the court to reformulate both questions or to interpret them restrictively. The court considers that there is no need for it to reformulate the question submitted to it for an advisory opinion in this proceeding. Indeed, the first question is whether the process of decolonization of Mauritius was lawfully completed in nineteen sixty having regard to international law following the separation of the Chagos Archipelago from its territory in nineteen sixty-five. The General Assembly's reference to certain resolutions which it adopted during this period does not, in the court's view, prejudge either their legal content or scope. In question A, the General Assembly asks the court to examine certain events which occurred between nineteen sixty-five and nineteen sixty-eight and which fall within the framework of the process of decolonization of Mauritius as a non-self-governing territory. It did not submit to the court a bilateral dispute over sovereignty which might exist between the United Kingdom and Mauritius. In question B, which is clearly linked to question A, the court is asked to state the consequences under international law of the continued administration by the United Kingdom of the Chagos Archipelago. By referring in this way to international law, the General Assembly necessarily had in mind the consequences for the subjects of that law, including states. It is for the court to state the law applicable to the factual situation referred to it by the General Assembly in this request for an advisory opinion. There is thus no need for it to interpret restrictively the question is put to it by the General Assembly. When the court states the law in the exercise of its advisory function, it lends its assistance to the General Assembly in the solution of a problem confronting the assembly. In giving its advisory opinion, the court is not interfering with the exercise of the General Assembly's own functions. The court turns to the first question put to it by the General Assembly, namely whether the process of decolonization of Mauritius was lawfully completed having regard to international law. In order to pronounce on whether the process of decolonization of Mauritius was lawfully completed having regard to international law, the court will determine, first, the relevant period of time for the purpose of identifying the applicable rules of international law, and secondly, the content of that law. In addition, since the General Assembly has referred to some of the resolutions it adopted, the court, in determining the obligations reflected in these resolutions, will have to examine the function of the General Assembly in conducting the process of decolonization. Concerning the relevant period of time, the court notes that in question A, the General Assembly situates the process of decolonization of Mauritius in the period between the separation of the Chagos Archipelago from its territory in nineteen sixty-five and its independence in nineteen sixty-eight. It's therefore by reference to this period that the court is required to identify the rules of international law that are applicable to that process. The court is of the view that while its determination of the applicable law must focus on the period from nineteen sixty-five to nineteen sixty-eight, this will not prevent it, particularly when customary rules are at issue, from considering the evolution of the law on self-determination since the adoption of the Charter of the United Nations and of Resolution fifteen fourteen of fourteen December nineteen sixty, entitled Declaration on the Grantion of Independence to Colonial Countries and Peoples. Indeed, state practice and opinion juris, that is, the acceptance of that practice as law, both of which are under Article thirty-eight of the Statute of the Court, are consolidated and confirmed gradually over time. The court may also rely on legal instrumentes which postdate the period in question when those instrumentes confirm or interpret pre-existing rules or principles. Regarding the rules of international law, the court will have to determine the nature, content, and scope of the right to self-determination applicable to the process of decolonization of Mauritius and non-self-governing territory, recognized as such from nineteen forty-six onwards, both in the United Nations' practice and by the administering power itself. The court is conscious that the right to self-determination as a fundamental human right has a broad scope of application. However, to answer the question put to it by the General Assembly, the court will confine itself in this advisory opinion to analyzing the right to self-determination in the context of decolonization. The court begins by recalling that respect for the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples is one of the purposes of the United Nations as set out in its Charter. Such a purpose concerns in particular Chapter eleven of the Charter, entitled Declaration Regarding Non-Self-Governing Territories under which the members of the United Nations, which have or assume responsibilities for the administration of territories whose peoples have not yet attained a full measure of self-government, are obliged to develop the self-government of those peoples. In the court's view, it follows that the legal regime of non-self-governing territories as set out in Chapter eleven of the Charter was based on the progressive development of the institutions of these peoples so as to lead the population concerned to exercise their right to self-determination. Having made the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples one of the purposes of the United Nations, the Charter included provisions that would enable non-self-governing territories ultimately to govern themselves. It is in this context that the court must ascertain when the right to self-determination crystallizes as a customary rule binding on all states. The adoption of Resolution fifteen fourteen of fourteen December nineteen sixty represents a defining moment in the consolidation of state practice on decolonization. Prior to that resolution, the General Assembly had affirmed on several occasions the right to self-determination through various resolutions and a number of non-self-governing territories had acceded to independence. General Assembly Resolution fifteen fourteen clarifies the content and scope of the right to self-determination. The court notes that the decolonization process accelerated in nineteen sixty with eighteen countries, including seventeen in Africa, gaining independence during that year. During the nineteen sixties, the peoples of an additional twenty-eight non-self-governing territories exercised their right to self-determination and achieved independence. In the court's view, there is a clear relationship between Resolution fifteen fourteen and the process of decolonization following its adoption. As the court has noted in its previous case law, General Assembly resolutions, even if they are not binding, may sometimes have normative value. They can, in certain circumstances, provide evidence important for establishing the existence of a rule or the emergence of an opinion juris. The court considers that although Resolution fifteen fourteen is formally a recommendation, it has a declaratory character with regard to the right to self-determination as a customary norm in view of its content and the conditions of its adoption. The resolution was adopted by eighty-nine voters with nine abstentions. None of the states participating in the vote contested the existence of the right of peoples to self-determination. Certain states justified their abstention on the basis of the time required for the implementation of such a right. The wording used in Resolution fifteen fourteen has a normative character insofar as it affirms that, and I quote, "All peoples have the right to self-determination," end of quote. Its preamble proclaims, and I quote, "The necessity of bringing to a speedy and unconditional end colonialism in all its forms and manifestations," end of quote. This resolution further provides that, and I quote, "Immediate service shall be taken in trust and non-self-governing territories or all other territories which have not yet attained independence to transfer all powers to the peoples of those territories without any conditions or reservations in accordance with their freely expressed will and desire," end of quote. In order to prevent any dismemberment of any self, non-non-self-governing territories, Paragraph six of Resolution fifteen fourteen provides that, and I quote, "Any attempt aimed at the partial or total disruption of the national unity and territorial integrity of a country is incompatible with the purposes and principles of the Charter of the United Nations," end of quote. Article one, common to the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights and to the International Covenant on Economic, Social, and Cultural Rights adopted on sixteen December nineteen sixty-six by General Assembly Resolution twenty-two hundred A, reaffirms the right of all peoples to self-determination. The nature and scope of the right to self-determination of peoples, including respect for the national unity and territorial integrity of a country, were reiterated in the Declaration on Principles of International Law concerning friendly relations and cooperation among states in accordance with the Charter of the United Nations. This declaration was annexed to General Assembly Resolution twenty-six twenty-five, which was adopted by consensus in nineteen seventy. By recognizing the right to self-determination as as one of the basic principles of international law, the declaration confirmed its normative character under customary international law. The means of implementing the right to self-determination in a non-self-governing territory were set out in Principle six of General Assembly Resolution fifteen forty-one, adopted on fifteen December nineteen sixty. And I quote, "A non-self-governing territory can't be said to have reached a full measure of self-government by: A) emergence as a sovereign independent state; B) free association with an independent state; C) integration with an independent state," end of quote. The court records that while the exercise of self-determination may be achieved through one of the options laid down by Resolution fifteen forty-one, it must be the expression of the free and genuine will of the people concerned. However, the right of self-determination leaves the United Nations General Assembly a measure of discretion with respect to the forms and procedures by which that right is to be realized. The right to self-determination under customary international law does not impose a specific mechanism for its implementation in all instances. Some participantes have argued that the customary status of the right to self-determination did not entail an obligation to implement that right within the boundaries of the non-self-governing territory. The court recalls that the right to self-determination of the people concerned is defined by reference to the entirety of a non-self-governing territory, as stated in the aforementioned Paragraph six of Resolution fifteen fourteen. Both state practices and opinion juris at the relevant time confirm the customary law character of the right to territorial integrity of a non-self-governing territory as a corollary of the right to self-determination. No example has been brought to the attention of the court in which, following the adoption of Resolution fifteen fourteen, the General Assembly or any other organ of the United Nations has considered as lawful the detachment by the administrative power of part of a non-self-governing territory for the purpose of maintaining it under its colonial rule. States have consistently emphasized that respect for the territorial integrity of a non-self-governing territory is a key element of the exercise of the right to self-determination under international law. The court considers that the peoples of non-self-governing territories are entitled to exercise their right to self-determination in relation to their territory as a whole, the integrity of which must be respected by the administrative power. It follows that any detachment by the administrative power of part of a non-self-governing territory, unless based on the freely expressive and genuine will of the people of the territory concerned, is contrary to the right to self-determination. In the court's view, the law on self-determination constitutes the applicable international law during the period under consideration, namely, between nineteen sixty-five and nineteen sixty-eight. The court noted in its advisory opinion on Namibia the consolidation of that law. Having determined the applicable international law, the court proceeds to examine the functions of the General Assembly during the process of decolonization.
All right, so what did we learn? In those twenty-five minutes? You see, it's all about the right of the Moors to decolonize. See, the Moors always had a right to decolonize. But they had to follow the procedure of law. But the Moors never knew about the law. What law were they supposed to be enforcing? International law. This is what the Chief Judge Youssef was saying for twenty-five minutes. It's all about international law. It's about enforcing the Charter of the United Nations underwater. Chapter eleven, which is Article seventy-three and seventy-four, by rights of indigenous people to force the administrative state, what's the administration state? That's the colonial state. So every time he mentioned the word administration, he was talking about the United Kingdom, Great Britain, United States, or any colonial state. So you must understand that in the year twenty nineteen, the islanders or the Mauritius was fighting for decolonization to get complete decolonization. And they were utilizing international law to get their rights. But first, they had to recognize themselves as what? Hold on for a second, let me get my, uh, my pen, hold on. All right, I'm back. Bam! The Moors had to use their pen to put an end to colonists and obstructionists by establishing what? State. But listen to me. It has to be what's called a continuation state. What's a continuation state? The Empire Morocco, the Empire Morocco was a continuation state because there's the high contracting party on the treaties. If you try to establish a state in a different name, then that's not the name on the treaties. That's called a what? Secession state. If you create a succession state, that means you have ceded yourself away. You've separated yourself away from the treaty because you created a name that's not recognized in the treaty. You must be a continuation state. You must continue when the name is on the treaty. And what's the name on the treaty? Morocco. But Morocco is a standalone word for what? Empire. So we had to add a couple of words to say Empire Morocco, but the purpose and intent is to be a what? Continuation state of an ancient state called Morocco. And the only reason why we have to add the word Empire Morocco because the Europeans undermined the empire in nineteen fifty-six under coercion and caused Mohammed the Fifth to call his territory Kingdom of Morocco. So the Moors had to come back after that to make a distinction between the kingdom and what? The empire. But it's still the empire, that's the key word. Empire of what? Morocco, that's a continuation state. It continues on under the name because the name of the state lives forever. The office of Sultan shall live forever because it's tied to what? The state. So the office of Sultan shall live forever. Forever. And the office of Sultan is tied to the state. Continuation state, not succession state. What's a succession state? Kingdom Morocco, it's a brand-new state. What's another succession state? Mauritania, that's a brand-new state in nineteen sixty. What's another succession state? Western Sahara, that's a brand-new state. They've all separated themselves from the empire. So the wishes the Moors learned from what happened to the Western Sahara, they got annexed by the King Morocco. To this very day in the year twenty twenty-four, they're still getting pumped by the King Morocco. Why? Because those Moors of the Western Sahara didn't follow the instructions to pledge their allegiance to the Empire Morocco, the state. Why? Because there was no Empire Morocco and no Sultan in the nineteen sixties and seventies, that's why. Okay, let's talk Moors Science Temple. Moors Science Temple claimed they want to do what? Uplift all humanity. Well, how was you gonna do that when there's no Sultan after nineteen fifty-six? And prior to nineteen fifty-six, when the Sultan was alive, right, talking about the office, somebody senior office prior to nineteen fifty-six, it was France, who was a de facto Sultan. And the Dajure Sultans were still there prior to nineteen fifty-six. Why didn't the Moors pledge their allegiance to the Empire Morocco prior to nineteen fifty-six? That's a question because that's what the treaty says. I can understand why Moors didn't pledge their allegiance to Empire Morocco after nineteen fifty-six, but what about the Moors prior to nineteen fifty-six? They didn't follow the instructions. Justice Castro in nineteen seventy-five said "These Moors have to have a political tie to the state if they want to claim sovereignty." So now, when the year twenty twenty-four, the Western Sahara case comes out in nineteen seventy-five, so fifty years later, Moors still haven't followed the instructions. Now we just finished listening to Chief Justice Youssef from the year twenty nineteen, that was just five years ago, talking about what indigenous people have to do to declare their independence, self-determination, so they can self-govern as what? A state called Mauritius. Twenty nineteen. Why is it that Moors don't know nothing about these ICJ cases? Listen, as I start to close out, listen as I start to close out. We don't have a period. Here's a few case studies the Moors should have always known about. Okay, from the top, Brother Joseph.
International Court of Justice, ICJ Case Law to Study. One, France versus the United States of America, nineteen fifty-two. Two, Western Sahara Advisory Opinion, nineteen seventy-five. Three, Mauritius Peggles Advisory Opinion, twenty nineteen.
Oh, so if the Moors have never been taught about these ICJ cases, you gotta ask yourself the question, why didn't we know about that? You know what the answer is, it's two parts. Number one, your so-called teachers didn't tell you. And number two, you didn't do the scholarship to find out about them. So blame yourself and blame your teachers. But at the end of the day, it's all on you. Listen, here's some more cases, here's the United States.
United States Supreme Court Case Law to Study. One, Sanchez-Lamas.
Yamis.
Lamis?
Yamis.
Yamis versus Oregon, two thousand and six, Justice Roberts. Number two, McGirt versus Oklahoma, twenty twenty, Justice Gorsuch.
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 Okay, what are these cases about? These are internal domestic cases from the United States Supreme Court. What are these cases about? Well, Justice Roberts was in two thousand and six was looking at a case of Sanchez-Yamis versus Oregon because he was taking a look at international law. Then he told the United States and the several union states and all their lower courts, "Yeah, y'all keep playing these games if you want to with this procedural default rule and the exceptionalist rule, but at the end of the day, it's gonna be a costly toll when all these states on planet Earth start bringing cases against you for violating the right of foreign nationals." So Moors need to go back and look this case up, right? Regarding what? The Annual Convention on Customs Relations of nineteen sixty-three, which is international law, it's a custom of law. The United States is talking about international law. Number two, what else? McGirt versus Oklahoma, the year twenty twenty, Justice Gorsuch went in on Oklahoma and the federal government because he said treaty supreme law to man. So he was enforcing treaties of those Indian treaties, Muskegee, Cherokee, et cetera. So Justice Gorsuch turned around and told the United States, "You guys are breaching treaties." And the several union states are breaching treaties. So why do I have these two up here? To show you that the United States Supreme Court is supporting international law, especially treaties. You see, the United States, fifty states, there are attorney generals and governors and legislative branch and lower courts. They all know that the Supreme Court of the United States is not going to have their back with those several union states trying to say, "Do we really have to abide by these treaties these Moors are talking about?" You know, the United States Supreme Court gonna say? Yes, under what? Article six, clause two supremacy clause. The United States judges are bound to what? The Constitution and all treaties made is what? The supreme law to man. And anything to the contrary is not withstanding, you see? So even the Supreme Court of the United States is not going to support the governors. The Supreme Court of the United States is not gonna support the President of the United States, the House, and Senate members. The Supreme Court of the United States is not gonna support the belligerent lower courts. Supreme Court's already told them, "If you don't want adhering treaties, then take your name off the treaty. Until then, it shall be binding on you." This Supreme Court, especially Justice Gorsuch, he told them straight up. He said, "You take your name off of it or adhere to it. Those are your choices." Listen, we just finished listening to a case about indigenous people. As I start to close out. Look what Martin Luther King was saying in the nineteen sixties. Nineteen sixties. Brother Dre.
Before the pilgrims landed at Plymouth, we were here. Before the pen of Jefferson edged across the pages of history, the majestic words of the Declaration of Independence, we were here. Martin Luther King, April third, nineteen sixty-three.
So this is what Martin Luther King was saying in the sixties. He's talking about these indigenous people that's calling themselves Negro, Black, and Colored, was not brought from Africa. Martin Luther King knew this in the sixties. What was going on in the sixties? African states was doing what? Decolonizing. The islanders were doing what? Decolonizing. Martin Luther King knew that everybody was decolonizing. So look what he says. Quote, "Before the pilgrims landed at Plymouth, we were here. Before the pen of Jefferson edged across the pages of history, the majestic words of the Declaration of Independence, we were here. We were here before the pilgrims. We were here before the United States of America or the Articles of Confederation, constitutions. We were already here." This Martin Luther King was saying, when? April third, nineteen sixty-three, he was saying this. Look what else he said in the sixties, listen.
Dre.
After the Emancipation Proclamation, one hundred years later, the Negro was still languished in the corners of American society and finds himself in exile in his own land of August twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-three. Martin Luther King.
So Martin Luther King in nineteen sixties, while the whole world of colonized people are decolonizing and seeking independence and self-governance, here's what Martin Luther King says in nineteen sixty-three. After the Emancipation Proclamation, right, Lincoln, eighteen sixty what? Three, right? Sixty-three through sixty-five, right? Says what? "After Emancipation Proclamation, one hundred years later, the Negro is still languished in the corners of American society and finds himself in exile in his own land." See, Martin Luther King knew we didn't come from Africa. He said this in nineteen sixty-three, August twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-three. So he made both of these remarks in the sixties, you see that? Both of them, one was April third, nineteen sixty-three, the other one, August twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-three. So you gotta understand what's happening here. Martin Luther King knew what was up, right? He knew what was up. He knew it was up. But he also had to understand we need that what? A state and a nationality. But watch this as I start to close out. Martin Luther King said what? "The Negro is still exiled in his own land." So who's the Negro? Let's look up Etymotic Dictionary as I start to close out. Etymotic Dictionary, you look up the word Moor, capital M, noun. Now you look at Negro. Who's the Negro? Moors. Who's the Black people? Blacks. Or who? Moors. So Negroes, Blacks, and Coloreds are who? Moors. You think Martin Luther King didn't know that? Of course he did. So what do we take away from this class today? Well, first of all, we'll keep studying over Justice Castro's Western Sahara case, right, his opinion because he's breaking it down, saying these Moors have an obligation to pledge allegiance to the state under a legal tie, i.e. a political tie. He narrowed it down, and the Moors failed at that. And he's making it clear. In nineteen seventy-five, nearly fifty years ago, and the Moors still haven't declared their independence and pledged allegiance to the Empire Morocco. What else did we learn from today's class? We started understanding what? Even in the year twenty nineteen, he talked about the Mauritius islanders outside of the what? Malagastar Island had already declared their independence. They already had a state, but they were trying to get the United Kingdom, i.e. Great Britain, the United States, out of one of their islands. So they took, they, they did what? They petitioned the General Assembly of the United Nations to ask a question to the ICJ. The ICJ gave a biased opinion and ruled in favor of the Mauritius, i.e. the Moorish people of those islands. Twenty nineteen, just five years ago. Judge Yousuf told them straight up, all people have a right to self-determination that's been colonized, including the Moors that are in the territories of the United States, Canada, Great Britain, Ireland, Wales, France, Germany, Netherlands, Sweden, Norway, Spain, Portugal, uh, Russia, Italy, Poland, you name it. You gotta understand, this is called international law and statehood. And that's what the HEPAC study session is all about, about teaching people the law and not about your private law of your patently frivolous and arbitrary capricious charters that you call your religious corporations and your so-called chartered states. You don't have no charter state. You got a private charter that's under the jurisdiction of the United States. You gotta understand that we as Moors have failed because we don't follow instructions. Now it's time to follow instructions because what? Why should we follow instructions? It's because it's last paragraph down here. "The naturalized Moorish subjects will forever be colonized and marginalized if the Moors do not consent to the Empire of Morocco state." I am with that. Islam.
Islam.